It's six o'clock.
It's okay, it's okay.
But, um, for him being present, we will call this meeting to order. We have lots of guests here, but I'm gonna let you guys introduce yourselves whenever comes your time, alright? We won't introduce you right now, but happy to have you here and the parents also. Good to have you guys here. And we will probably move you forward on our agenda so that you don't have to sit through a lot of the boring stuff, unless you just want to. You're welcome to stay if you want to, whenever we get there. Alright, first the consent agenda. You have it on your iPad there with the minutes from previous meetings and the budget summary, bills and personnel. Are there any questions concerning any items on the consent agenda? If not, then I would receive a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion's made in second, do they need discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Alright, then, we're gonna let the middle school go right ahead. Are you gonna introduce yourself or do you want Dr. Johnson to?
Whatever, if he wants to.
Go ahead and take it out.
Do we have the presentation?
This as well, if you like the clicker. There you go. See if I can get your slideshow up on the screen for you.
While we're getting it pulled out, I'll introduce. These are our sixth grade Science and STEM Club members. I always called it Science Club, but honestly, it's a lot more STEM related. So, the members we have tonight are Addison, from there, Presley, Savannah, Heidi and Blenna. When I told them that, "Hey, we're gonna present," they all were very excited. I didn't think I'd have this many, but I'm so glad I do. Before I let these ladies take over though, I'm gonna give a quick update on last year because last year I saw many of you guys when I took last year's group here to present. So, that group, they lasted until about mid-March is how long Science Club lasted last year. We actually got to go to the St. Louis Science Center. That was a lot of fun. They had a planetarium show on the Eclipse which was coming up really soon from there, so we went and saw that. They had a lot of fun, but other than that, I'll let these ladies tell us about this year.
This year's Science and STEM Club had their first meeting on October 2nd. We meet only on days after school until 4:30. We have 10 to 15 members and we've had five meetings so far.
Skills needed and learned in Science Club. You need teamwork, math, engineering, creativity, confidence, patience, leadership, organization and you have to be open to suggestions.
And I will say, they came up with all of those skills themselves.
I will be talking about what we did for the first two weeks and we make these parachutes. The different parts of a parachute was the cape, the string and the weight. The design, it mattered about the design for the air to go in and out of the parachute. The material for the cape, we had, for the cape, we had a black trash bag, clear trash bag, tissue paper or paper. The string, we had the stretchy string and the fishing string. And then for the weight, we had different sizes of clips and we tested it at the fifth grade STOL.
Weeks two through four, we made cars out of recycled trash. During this, we learned how we needed center of gravity, distributed mass and we encountered struggles with finding the right size axles, getting lightweight and the shape for our cars to go farther. We powered our cars with balloons.
What we would like to do, first, we would like to do more hands-on projects and we would like to have a tour of the CTE building and we went to work with the high school to see a chemistry demonstration and then we would also like to have a science-based future. Any questions?
I've got a question. What parachute was?
Mine. Didn't want to go down, I wanted to go up.
Oh, it was made of?
Um, a clear trash bag and some stretchy string with a lightweight.
How many strings you gotta pull to get into the CTE building?
Um, I had been in contact with them. Mr. Naps responded, he just, Wednesday's very busy, but he said whenever he had time, he'd let us know because we'd really like to see some of those things.
So, it's a fun club, looks like. Are we invited to go attend March?
Um, but...
It's a closed club.
How many participants do you have in the sixth grade in Science Club?
What was that?
How many participants do you have in the sixth grade?
It varies. We had 20 sign up, but it's due to about 10 to 15. Some people can't go every week and, you know, I understand that, but...
Is it for every grade or?
Just sixth grade is what I do right now. Usually I have enough that I kinda have to limit it to sixth grade. The ones from last year are asking if they'd come back, but I let them have a chance this year, so...
That's pretty awesome. Looks like you're gonna see that you guys enjoy it, that you're learning a lot and wanna be there.
Any other questions?
Yep, maybe you guys could get some of the high school CTE and rowlees over there to come and talk to you about what they're doing.
I do have a high school science teacher that is planning a demonstration for them and so we're hoping to go over to the high school, get to see that too and so...
Yep.
Alright, well, thank you guys. Thanks, I'm saying nice for something nice.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay.
Jared, is this a girl home in club?
No, last year it was mostly boys that presented, but last year it was mostly boys, but this year it's mostly girls. There are a couple of boys this year, but they don't...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's right down, but it's not working yet. Okay, we're starting with elementary and Mr. Rogers unable to be here tonight, he's a little under the weather, so I'm just gonna hit the highlights for you on elementary. You've got that in your packet. Upcoming events, the elementary, progress grades are due November 16th. This is gonna really test my eyesight here. Bright and shine on November 25th. Kindergarten Thanksgiving program, that's always a highlight. That is in the auditorium and that will be the 26th. Be some turkeys and pilgrims in that program, I'm sure. And then the 27th through 29th, everybody is on Thanksgiving break. Thanksgiving break, just three days this year instead of the five that we've had the last few years, but we had a longer fall break. Some notes from the elementary, November 7th, they had their fall concert. I heard lots about the fall concert, I wasn't able to attend, but I know there were lots and lots of people that did attend the fall concert. Always really, really well attended, has a patriotic and Thanksgiving theme to it. PD workshop on November 7th, reshaping reading. So, reading was the focus of the elementary for their November 7th PD day. And then today was the Veterans Day Assembly, the fourth grade saying some gave all and did a really nice job with that. That's always a great assembly, I'm sure the other admin will talk about that as well and then they're working on their reading success plans in the elementary.
Bertie tell me that they went through the elementary hallway?
Yeah, Veterans.
Kids were chanting USA.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure you'll see some videos and pictures on that at some point, but I think before the assembly, they had the veterans walk through the elementary and give them kind of a parade and the kids and the veterans, everybody I think got a big charge out of that, so, very good. We try to do Veterans Day upright. So, that is the elementary report.
Alright, then we'll just go up.
Go up the ladder.
Yep.
To the middle school.
Alright, so, our numbers are hanging out pretty steady right there in the mid-350s. Overall, our attendance has been pretty good as far as percentage-wise. We did hit a little stretch there where we had seemed like quite a bit of sickness, but hopefully we can make it a little deeper into the year before we hit a bunch of that. A lot of these events Colton's gonna talk about here, so I'm gonna kinda skip over that. And I will say that the Veterans Day Assembly was very nice today. It was a very nice assembly. And then the 18th, and I've added a couple other things over here on the celebration side since then, since I submitted this to Dr. Spence, but on the 18th, we had our 100 year celebration at the middle school, which was a really neat event, just celebrating the building turning 100 years old this fall. And so, we had the building open to...
So many jokes they wanna make.
It's all pertaining to COVID.
And my COVID.
I thought maybe I said something, I'm like, "Wow."
Clearing that up, that was not your...
Anytime you mention the word 100 years old, I'm like...
Like Coach helped break ground.
I went to high school when it was 100.
Now, you can, okay, we're fucking Mac's dad.
Okay, I'm to the character trait assembly. No, that was a good day at the middle school. There was a lot of people that showed up to that during the day. We had, we went down, the senior center actually brought a van up of people and we gave tours of the building. The kids did activities. Mr. Cochran played a large role in planning that day and so I just wanna say thanks to him for that. And, but overall, it was a nice day and we had a bunch of people that showed up. We opened up the building after school and surprising, there was a lot of people that showed up after school from 4 to 6 before the football game. And we gave tours and just had the building open for people to walk around and tell stories and it was really neat. We even interviewed a lot of the people that, you know, had gone to school there and had stories to tell so that we can put together a documentary type deal of the building, kind of the history of the building from some of those folks' perspectives.
I heard there was a time capsule too.
There was a time capsule, yeah. There was a lot of random stuff that was put in the time capsule, so... And we even broke the time capsule back open to put some more stuff into it after we had sealed it, so, anyways. The 31st, we had our quarterly character trait assembly where we hand out our awards to the kids and just recognize those kids that made good choices. Seven traits there that we recognize. And then a couple things that I didn't put down that I wanna mention that we have going on at the middle school is the bear store and that's something that was kinda up, got up and going last year and now it's rolling again. Our student leadership puts that on and there's all kinds of things in the bear store from knickknacks and toys to things that kids might really need like clothes, shoes, you know, just shampoo, items that, like I said, that kids might really need. And kids earn points, basically just a point system. You would not believe the kids that come out of there excited with a new set of pants or a new jacket or just some really neat stuff that's taking place there with the bear store. So, I'm just really excited about that, I'm thankful for that, I'm thankful for the people that put that together. Ms. Drake works really hard at the bear store on making sure that we have that and it's really beneficial, it's good for our kids. So, also, we had some sixth grade and eighth grade student presentations that took place. These took place in bear time in the sixth grade in Ms. Earl's class and then there was another one that was very similar to that in the eighth grade. Basically, what they were were mini senior projects that the kids put together. And then they gave presentations, they had to create a product, give a presentation on it and then the grade levels would come through and kinda tour that, so it was really nice. And something that I'm encouraging all of our teachers to do. We've got our iReady testing date set for December, I'll be talking about that with the teachers at our staff meeting that we have coming up this Wednesday. And then also, we're kinda hitting this a little bit earlier, I have, or we have, our teachers observing each other and giving feedback to each other, so we're gonna be doing that hopefully twice this year instead of just once. So, we've got one of those scheduled that can be taken place right now and then we'll have that done before Christmas, so... Any questions?
Ours is pretty short. Colton may talk about some of these things that have been going on. You can see, the one that I would highlight, the Emma Benoit Suicide Prevention Assembly last week was very good. Feedback from everybody that I talked to about it was very positive, it's a good message. And they complimented our students on their attentiveness and behavior in that and that's always good to hear when you have somebody from outside that compliments the students. And then the Veterans Assembly today, that was done as Alicia Shank's senior project, got positive responses from the veterans that were there. So, those are two things that were very good recently. Coming up, NHS induction on Thursday and basketball season. Middle school, first game tonight. Basketball doesn't have games for a little bit, practice is in full swing and things are gonna get busy really quick.
Got a question.
Yes.
I went to her deal later on that night at Crossway. She talked about in high school, the whole program, is that something we would ever consider here?
Um, depends. So, I was talking about that, I don't know what the cost of it is, there is a cost to it, but I think Emma had talked to Jeff Conger about, they're looking at starting some scholarships for some...
You may wanna explain what the hope is real fast.
So, basically, and I don't know that I can give the best, but basically it's training staff, training students to recognize other students who may be struggling and trying to help them deal with things before they get to that point where they might be thinking about suicide, but it's a prevention program. But they are looking at maybe some scholarships for some schools in different places to put that program on and so we're looking to get more information on that and see if it's something that we could make work.
I was also at Crossways that night and I was real impressed with all the kids that was there.
Yeah, there were probably 100 or more, yeah, easy.
I would say. Colton, did you get a head count?
I don't have an exact number, but it was a packed house.
It was. The adults were way outnumbered.
Excellent program.
So, there must be, there must be an interest for to turn out that number of people.
Yeah, whoever picked it did an awesome job of having her in that program.
I think we were able to do that, I think thanks to some grant money that Marlena was able to secure and, you know, I think Jeff brought that too, wanting to do, help us do something and we were able to make that work and I think it was, I think it was really good.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
You mentioned the compliments on kids' attention and so on. I thought at the Veterans Assembly, the same thing, I was impressed with, you know, and I know there's always one here and there, but middle school and high school both were very attentive and...
And fourth grade.
Fourth grade did an excellent job singing, yeah, it was, it was good.
Yeah. Anything else?
Best for last, right?
Yep.
So, on the special ed world...
We'll put you first next.
Oh, that's okay. You said earlier you were climbing the ladder and I was happy to be at the top, not on the bottom rung, so...
Colton says he's last.
Well, that is the best for last then, I would definitely go with the student input being better than mine. So, special ed world, since last meeting, I know we talked about referrals and like we doubled the number from where we were at last month on kids we have in process of testing. You know, it's busy in special ed world all the time, meetings, things like that going on. I was gonna say, probably one of the biggest things, I mean, we've been to meetings, do PD, that kinda stuff all the time, getting better and doing what we're doing, but I don't know if I've mentioned, maybe I have briefly, about a kind of initiative that the high school, high needs classroom is doing. We've kind of started our own school-based enterprise for our high needs students to learn some employability skills while they're at school. And so, we have a group of about five or six kids that are in Ms. Jackson Bean's classroom and we have a freeze dryer business. I was able to purchase a freeze dryer with some grant money that I had had a couple years ago and so the kids are learning how to prepare a product and market a product and sell a product. They're at the selling stage now. Last year, they had the freeze dryer and they were learning how to use it a little bit and then this year, they're really doing some things and now that big block of, that 10-minute break in the afternoon, Ms. Jackson Bean's students are able to set up their store and sell product to students and it's been very popular so far. They've been doing it maybe a month or so now?
Yeah.
Probably a month or so now. They tried it like the first time and it went over really well and they couldn't wait till they got back out and so they're looking at other things they can freeze dry and try to market to the students, so it's been a very positive thing. We've had students that have really struggled in school with finding their place and wanting to be here and acceptance and like had a really difficult year last year that are really thriving in having a purpose and so we've really enjoyed that. They've came over and marketed and sold to be in the office as well and like doing things like making change, giving an amount of money and making change for the product that they've sold. So, I think so far, they've raised $500 or $600 of the product from the product sales that go back into account to resupply things and then with that, kind of the purpose is to give back to students. Like, any profit or anything made from that will go back to like maybe purchase cap and gowns for kids that don't have the money to do so or purchase things that kids need. I know that with the life skills program that there are some kids that can work on presentability that might need a haircut and so we can pay for them to get a haircut and things along the line. So, it's a really cool program for them to learn employability skills here at school and then also to give back to kids. So, we're hoping to eventually get to the point where we might be able to offer like a textbook scholarship money from what they've sold going forward, so, good goal. I do wanna mention, I know last month, and I don't know if Dr. Spence had planned on talking about this later in his budget update stuff, I know he always does something about that, but we had talked briefly about like a reduction in special ed numbers that from the year before, I don't remember what exactly the way we had talked about it from last month, but we had located a data error, something from our June core data cycle student file. What transferred over in June was the correct amount, but the amount that transfers over for reporting purposes for weighted ADA, it happens in the December core. So, when Mr. Wagner uploaded the corrected file, and all of this came because when we switch from SIS to Infinite Campus, the data from special ed numbers does not automatically like populate in Infinite Campus. We have to manually enter all of that data and when that merge took place, all of the data did not transfer correctly. We caught the error in June, it was fixed in June. The cycle that reports the numbers for weighted ADA had not been updated, but Mr. Wagner has now corrected that and it was a data error uploading problem and should not be an issue going forward, but I don't know if you were touching on that more lately or not. Okay, a good description.
Glad you summed it up, yeah.
Okay, I was like looking at data, core data and very number stuff.
So, 164 is the correct number, not the number of...
Well, that is our current number now as well as what it was on the correct, the year before, our special ed count was 152, our current number is 164 and that was also our December 1 count.
And you say it's doubled? You say, what you first put off that something had doubled, maybe I heard wrong or something?
It's gone up since last year, I think you...
Yes, I mean, we, from our December 1 count, the amount of money that for weighted ADA purposes that is received counts off of your December 1 child count and that's from our student core file. And the, like, special ed funding in itself really, special ed does not get funding based on the amount of kids we have in special ed overall, so the money we get from special ed is based on, like, the federal money is based on student attendance and free and reduced lunch count. You can have... You can have, whether you have 200 kids or 100 kids in special ed, you get the same amount of money regardless for federal funding. And that's the only like set aside allotted money you get for special ed. It does not matter how many kids you have in special ed to get for the federal funding piece of things. It's just an allotted amount based on your total student enrollment and your free and reduced lunch count, your federal funds. There's no specific money that's tied to special ed funding on the state side of things. Like, special ed doesn't get an allotted pool of money from state funds. Like, we, we, all of our funding from the state side of things comes out of the general fund. The only impact that there is on, like, what matters on special ed count on the state side of things is if we have over the, what's called the threshold amount, then there's like a multiplier that we get on our average daily attendance, an amount. The weighted ADA is based off of free and reduced lunch count, the amount of ELL students and the amount of special ed students that are over the threshold amount.
So, is that based on the whole school or?
Yes.
It's a district count?
It's a district count and not a special ed count.
Everything we do is.
Yeah, it's based on student enrollment and not specifically how many special ed students there are.
So, was it misreported internally or was it misreported to the state?
It was misreported to the state.
And now it's correct?
And now it's correct.
So, the number I quoted you last month, I believe it was 134 is what I quoted last month and I was pulling it up from our state data, but through that, we were able to see, okay.
Oh, there we go, it was not fixed, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
164 is the correct number.
I think it was 138 was what showed up and then the correct number was 164. Yeah, and we had noticed that from his data whenever we went back and looked and of course then we were in complete panic mode of, that's not the right number, what do we do? So, we were able to call and they said if we re-uploaded our December core file that they fixed it and it was, as of October 31st, it was uploaded and currently fixed.
So, you say this is a December count, so the 152 was last December?
We had, yes, last December, we had 152 special ed students.
And right now, we're at 164?
Yes.
And so, if that's the number, then this December, then that's, if it stays the same, that's what you report?
Yes. Yes.
And if I got all the gist of all this, whether we have five kids in special ed or 600, the funding makes no difference?
Federal funding.
Federal funding.
That does make a difference for the weighted ADA.
Yeah. Yeah, federal funding, yeah, federal funding for special ed doesn't change based on the amount of special ed students there are. Five or 600, you get the same amount of money, federal funding. State funding, the, it makes a difference. Like, last year, the threshold amount was 13.11%. And so, any amount over the threshold amount, any percentage over the threshold amount, we receive the, like, a small multiplier in addition to our ADA money. So, like, if we were at 14% instead of the 13.11%, then that 79, 0.79%, we get a little bit of extra bump on our weighted ADA money for average daily attendance.
How do we get to this threshold? Where, I mean, you talked about.
The threshold amount, that is based off of a state average. The state sets it. It has nothing to do with us.
No, and it's a, yeah. They take what they deem as high-performing schools and at those high-performing schools, they have this percentage that they have of special ed students. So, anything above that, they're gonna give you a little bit extra.
Extra money.
Yeah.
So, what are our slice of federal and state money?
Our federal slice is really low. You know, what Mrs. Barker was talking about, they get, they get some federal money for spend.
Most of, most of our.
But most of our money comes from the state. So, that's why that weighted ADA is so important to us.
Yeah.
And that's what was affected because I'm pretty sure when you showed us that information last month, it was 384, 84, $85,000 less.
And it should not be.
Right.
Like, all that should be corrected now.
Well, yeah, and we'll wait to get those numbers back, but.
You're right, that's not zero now, but it's.
It's not zero now.
But it's not as much as it was.
Maybe 300,000 or something different.
It probably wouldn't even be that. I mean, it, yeah, like, that's a significant number. Like, at 300, at 138 kids, like, we would not have met the threshold amount, but at 164 kids, we would have met the threshold amount. It's a big difference.
It's a big difference, so we'll, I'll have to wait and see what Desi does with that.
And they said, like, whenever I called and checked with them on like, woo, what do we do? And they said that like as soon as we get it submitted, like, our November payment should reflect the correct amount of special ed student. If there was weighted ADA multiplier, then our November payment should correct like.
So, they're gonna send us a balloon payment for whatever.
You're gonna see more in November than you have in the past.
For the, yeah. Basically, 26 number different or thirty, whatever the number is.
Well, it really isn't a matter of like how many more special ed kids is the amount we were over the threshold and whatever they, the threshold amount was.
But the more special ed kids, the higher we are over the threshold.
It could, could be, based on what the threshold amount is, yeah. Possibly could be. And it's not a significant amount, but it's enough to make a little bit of difference. Like, when we get weighted ADA, I mean, it.
It matters, yeah.
But, I mean, it's one of the pieces of the pie in weighted ADA because like one huge piece is like.
Freezer dish.
That's a huge one. And then the amount of English language learners is another piece of it. There's three pieces of that weighted ADA and I think we've had a decrease in all three of them. Like, our free or just lunch count, we've had a decrease in our ELL kids. Looking from last year's numbers to this year's numbers, I think we had 12 less ELL kids from last year to this year. So, that affected it. I mean, there, there are big pieces of that weighted ADA thing. Like, when you look at it across the board, when you've had decreases in all of them, it probably is a, like, something noticeable on impact, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Barker?
Claire's turn, right? You're welcome.
Colton? This is Colton's penultimate meeting. We've only got Colton for this meeting and next and then we'll, we'll have to change him out, but he's, we appreciate his service.
You're gonna make me sad now, thinking about that.
I'm sorry. It's not the last one.
It's not the last, you're right. But we are in a little bit of a transition phase with sports coming in and clubs just kind of getting into a little transition phase. So, not a whole lot going on, but still enough for me to cover. Couple of things in the high school, winter sports, all practicing, getting into full swing. And then a couple of fun events. We had Spike Wars last Saturday, which was volleyball teams between all the grades, seniors, sophomores, freshmen, juniors, all together. And the staff even had a team, had maybe one injury with Coach Brookshire, but he's recovering. But really fun experience, really fun for all of us to get together and especially to have that sort of connection with our teachers and really see them do some things we never imagined they could do. And no offense to them, again, we were impressed. And then this Friday, this may be some entertainment for you guys, but we have flag football this Friday as well. The exact same format between all the grades and so that should be a good time as well. Couple of club news, in FBLA, the Fall Film Festival, absolute success, absolute hit in my opinion. I think just about every single person I talked to enjoyed it. We wanna do it again. We wanna do it all the time, so great to see that. FBLA also visited their district conference slash meeting, another fun experience. We always go together, get our consensus and figure out the events that we're gonna do for the year. And then finally, we have our Silver Dollar City trip on November 22nd. So, they do have the Christmas lights ready. We will get to see some Christmas lights as well. That should be fun. FFA, biggest event of the year, just got back from national convention a couple of weeks ago. I will say that was an awesome experience. I talked to most of you about how that experience went. All in all, possibly, I think that was maybe one of, if not the best conventions that I've been to when it came to national convention. And then we also had our area and district fall speaking, had a lot of good results there. Sadly, nobody's advanced to the state competition, however, some really great performances there. And then tonight, as we speak, we're having our packing party, which is for all of our products, for fruit sales and meat sales, all of our in-house products such as our coffee or maybe the ordered nuts, all the candy jars. All that is being packed right now as we speak, getting ready to ship right out to you guys. So, FCC LA, they just got back from their Silver Dollar City trip on Saturday. They also had a good time. And then tomorrow, they are heading to their regional meeting. So, some good things going on in all the clubs. Some school news, couple new things in the high school. We have student IDs now. That's so we can scan into lunch and then just so they can see that we're a student and I believe it will also be used for submission to dances as well. So, just another identification method. Then like we discussed, fall break, and then we also had student-led conferences. I believe that those went well. I'm not entirely sure. I was in Indianapolis. And then in the middle school, we had the book fair, like I've talked about, big event there. And then, like we also said, basketball game's going on right now. And then on the 13th, we have the staff breakfast and the meeting. So, good to hear that from the staff, give them some appreciation. Who doesn't like a nice breakfast? And then on the 15th, we have our, they have their fall social. And then elementary's already covered. I wasn't able to get in touch with Mr. Rogers. And school-wide, like we talked about, I'll elaborate on this more. Emma Benoit, Benoit?
Benoit.
Benoit. Her documentary and her speech, absolutely incredible. And like you guys said, I agree with Debbie over here that the students were just so attentive and you could tell that it was just different. It was not a lot of talking going on. You could tell that they were really glued in and this was such a serious matter, which I'm also glad you brought up the Hope Squad because I was gonna ask about that as well. But I do believe if we can make something like that happen, huge game changer. And it really was just, you could tell students want some sort of change like that. And then finally, our concerns in the district, I'll jump, I'll come back to the, that stuff in a second. Regarding sports, it's been a small discussion. They wanted me to ask this, talk about our tertiary color to be black. I believe right now it is gray from what I've heard because I know they talked about the third color being a little different. It's a talk, wanted me to talk about. However, another school's color is maroon and gray, which is what really caused all that controversy and they really didn't like that. So, some sort of discussion there. And then finally, I said last week or last month, I would follow up on the mental health thing, so let's dig into that. So, it's obviously apparent morale and environment are, in my opinion, as well as other students, at possibly an all-time low right now when it regards to upcoming years and recent years. And now why? I dug deep with the little students and so here's a couple of things that I came up with. Stress, that's obviously a huge thing. There's obviously things that are inevitable that we have every single year that are gonna cause stress, research papers, senior projects, tests, whatever. That's the basis. That's something that we see every single year. This year, however, it's apparent that there's just been a lot of change and students feel like just so much has been thrown at them with all sorts of new things and having to adapt. And it's just a lot to really adjust to. And it's also apparent that expectations seem to be a lot higher. Lot of new rules, lot of new opportunities, and it's just a lot of good things seem to be expected, which this is all adding what I believe is just another weight to the student's shoulders. Now, with all this comes even more stress and all this starts to build up. And what they believe is, you guys will probably laugh at this, but they haven't been able to use their normal coping method, which would typically be their phone. It's something they're used to, part of their life. Now, whether that be finding something to ease their mind on their phone or a big thing will be texting their friend, maybe someone who they always talk to when it comes to having problems, who may be in another class. They obviously can't. So, obviously, this presents an even bigger change, which we saw at the end of last year as well. And then, like I said, morale, environment, very low. Students just don't seem to get along as well in those previous years. And some of them can just be rude or really annoying to each other. And I think part of this and other students as well, might be because of some of the downtime in the class. Because typically, when we get something done, we have time, you can take a break, you could get on your phone, you could do something on the Chromebook or whatever. However, that option has obviously been eliminated. Although we have Chromebooks, typically, a lot of stuff is restricted and they don't even bother to ask or be able to get anything done. And because of that, there's just no desire whatsoever. Therefore, they're just gonna sit, they're in silence, maybe talk to their friends, and it really just starts this chain of boredom. Silence and sitting there. And all this boredom eventually develops into what could become chaos and causes all of this. And then you have friends getting in arguments with each other, maybe they get mad at the teacher or the teacher gets mad at them because they're talking, because they're not doing anything. And all of this just comes together and it's just one big mess in the mind. And it's just causing stress and it's hurting their relationships and their personal health. So, sum all that up, I would just say, change, stress, poor relationships. And that's the cause of it all right now. But I will say, after getting the Emma Benoit and seeing how attentive they are, there's definitely room for change. There's definitely room to eliminate that stress and there's definitely room to turn those poor relationships into great relationships. Any questions?
And what do you think about it?
Which aspect?
All of it.
All of it?
I mean, as far as what, what can we do better?
So, when it comes to my belief, I can agree with most of it. I know phones are probably aren't the number one thing or whatever. They can definitely play a significant factor though. I mean, phones to us, especially are a huge part of our life. I mean, even looking right now, all of us have our phones on the table. It's something that we're attached to, not necessarily, not all of us, my apologies, but.
I don't know where it is.
Anyways, it's something we have and so that's a small factor as well. And it's just a lot of things adding up. What can we do? I think it's just something has to happen between the students in order for these relationships to change. Now, when it comes to the phones, not necessarily bring them back entirely. I personally agree with the classroom environment. I learn more when there's not a phone in my classroom. But when it came to the hallways or lunch, I know there's been a lot of chaos at lunch sometimes and I know that students just, relationships are not at a high and we just need to somehow learn how to build those relationships back and basically build communication skills and learn how to come together and actually be classmates.
Learn how to talk to each other.
Exactly, yes.
It sounds like still, you know, I'm not downplaying nothing. I mean, there's adjustment part, you know, to everybody, even for us and more or whoever. You know, you think they're settling, think it's maybe getting better or worse evening out with adjustment since we're back, we're in school now two, three months?
So, now that we're kind of rolling in school, it is maybe starting to change, but it could also go one of two ways. Things can start to change or they can easily go downhill as more things start to add up. Senior projects start getting deadlines, you start getting deadlines on your research papers or you start having a test to come up. So, those things can definitely go down as well. But with that, classmates could also work together and they could come together and build those relationships back up as the school year goes on. So, really, it could just boil down to students learning to communicate with each other somehow and learning how to be friends in person and not just a status online.
This is kind of first year for a lot of stuff. Again, I'm not downplaying.
Absolutely, I understand.
You know, you think maybe once all this is implemented and next year, things might be, might be easier.
Now that we're adjusting, once we adjust.
I mean, I'm trying to get to the bottom of things that we're talking out here. I mean, I don't, I wanna help anybody where we can. Just trying to figure, you know, figure it out along with the US.
Yeah, so, once we get, maybe next year, maybe completely different, I can't see that far. I can't really predict it. I don't have much of a prediction. I may be misunderstanding your question. If I am, please correct me.
No, this adjustment, you know, maybe kids, you know, get used to it and next year, their senior may be a little easier since they're already used to it here.
It might be.
Yeah.
I mean, I know as a personal student, I expect a senior projects. I knew what to expect. I'm living it right now. And it's, it may far exceed my expectations. It may be easier than I thought. And it's really just, it may come down to personal students. I myself believe I can cope with things better. I have a little more self-control in myself, but other students may just absolutely let it get to them and absolutely let it wreck them and may not be able to adjust. Now, when it comes to them adjusting in a few years, now that all the change won't come, if there isn't as much change, that weight may not be on their shoulders as much. But again, I'm not too entirely sure. I don't have a clear answer on that, so I apologize.
So if you had a depression, problems at home, what do you do?
Absolutely. So the first thing I do is.
Well, I mean, not necessarily you, but.
Not me personally.
Just the school in general. If, if John Doe doesn't have any help at home, he's depressed, he has maybe grades that's not good, he has whatever. Who does he go to? Is there anyone that you can, I mean, the other night it kind of woke me up to the fact they were going to each other. They knew what student had been trained to help each other. They had materials they could go to to help that student, you know? So do we have anything like that that the kids are feeling confident that, oh yeah, Mrs. So-and-so, she's been trained in that? Or she specializes in that, or she's good at that? Or do you just say, I guess I'll just do harm?
I kind of follow through. I know the school provides a lot of stuff. Do the kids know that? Do they feel that? Do they understand that?
So before, not really, but after the documentary and the speech, we have the counselors, they let the counselors know, counselors even talk to some students in the middle of that. So they've definitely been introduced and they know that they are there. Now, what a student realistically, some students possibly don't really feel as comfortable with that. I mean, that's a different thing. You're a student and you don't really feel like going to talk to a teacher. So in John Doe's situation, I think he would possibly go consult to a friend. Or I do believe and I know that there are some teachers that students will absolutely go to and they feel absolutely comfortable with, whether it's their favorite teacher or a teacher that they have a close connection with. They can do that. And then they also know that the counselor's corner is there and they can go talk to him as well. Realistically though, John Doe would probably go to his friend and when he got home, he would constantly talk to his friend on his phone or just scroll through and find something, whether it be reading and consuming lies or reading and consuming truth.
It just kind of brought to light to me after I attended the other night, at the problem that lies with our young adults today.
And I completely agree. And it really brought attention to a lot of that matter. And like we said with the Hope Squad, something like that could occur where John Doe could go out. And he knows that there's someone there. And I believe personally, the closest thing we have to that right now is our FCA chapter. A lot of students know about the FCA chapter and they know who all is involved in the FCA chapter. And they know that they can reach out to absolutely any of us. And they know that we're gonna be welcoming with open arms. And so that's the closest thing we have right now. So students know that there are some students they can reach out to.
Now, FCA is what again?
Future or fellowship Christian athletics. And it's not just athletes however, fellowship Christian athletes. So really fellow Christian, everyone.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
The good thing is, is you guys are talking about this.
Absolutely.
And, and the administration, teachers, everybody is aware. They're talking about it too and talking about it with you. So yeah, that's the first step.
It is. And we're definitely making a step, talking it and addressing it. It's always the first thing. So good things possibly coming.
Thank you, Colton.
Thank you, guys.
Before we get to, sorry Andrew, before we get to Andrews, I just wanted to update you. This is a department that never really gets brought up at a board meeting. And I, I get their numbers every month and we don't have a normal spot to kind of shine the light on our nursing staff. But they see a lot of students and I just kind of want to highlight that for the board while we're going through some reports here. But I get one of these every month and October is actually a, a smaller month because of fall break. But total number of students seen in the health room, 1,191 students seen in our nurses' office. So I think that's just a good reminder for not just you guys, but our staff in general, just how many kids go through the nurse's office in a month. Seventy-four students were excluded from school due to illness or injury, 114 vision screenings, 178 hearing screenings, 222 fluoride treatments, that's kindergarten through fourth grade. Three hundred and seventy-nine medication doses monthly. So we have students that have to go to the nurse for their medication during the day. Sixty-nine extensive medical procedures monthly. So those are sixty-nine procedures that our nurses have to do for students during the day for them just to continue on during the school day. And then two 911 calls. So just wanted to give some, some love to our nurses, Ashley Forrest, Stephanie Gentry and Julia Belts. They do a, a really good job. I know they're overwhelmed at times over there. But that's not something that appears in our normal admin reports, but did want to just kind of shine the light on them briefly to, to show you how much they do in a month. And that's a short month.
Is that 1191 in the month of October or since?
In the month of October.
Really?
Yes.
Is that, then that's the breakdown of it that's.
Yes, well, yeah, I mean, in addition, but of the 1191, 74 of those, you know, and that's not all the kids obviously that were home for illness or injury, but sent home from the nurse's office.
So that's one month, like 20 days of school probably?
Yeah, maybe.
Sending 60 kids a day?
Yeah, probably a little less than 20 days.
Twenty per.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot. So and that's not flu season. So I'll try to do this again maybe in January, February. And anyway, I just wanted to, to thank those ladies for all they do. That's a kind of an unsung hero of the, the district is the, is the school nurses. So we appreciate that. And now, we'll move from that to technologies.
You know how to run that, Andrew?
I think I can figure it out.
I'll get it there still.
Let me start it for you. You could probably do it, like blinking your eye.
So I can tell you guys why we're presenting, because we normally don't. I haven't presented, I don't know, six to eight years maybe. It's been a long time since I was on the board. But we found that it'd probably be a good idea to have the board approve our E-rate purchases that we do every year. And so I'm gonna introduce E-rate to you so you know what that is. And we're just gonna kind of give you an update as to like what's up in tech. So history, what we do, budget. So I'm gonna take you back to Jerry Walter era. So that's the name you've ever had in there in a while. And I don't even know what the year he started was because that was beyond me. But Jerry Walters, back in 2000, 2010, he laid the fiber copper backbone. That was the network that we still use today. The fibers that are around are almost all the same. We've added a few. He set up a Windows-based domain standardized on Microsoft Office. And then at that time, we standardized generally, one teaching machine in a classroom, one student machine. Student machine was for AR or STAR, mostly in elementary, in the middle school, high school had a few extras. But even back then, the student machines were always like, can we afford to keep these? I don't know. It was kind of dippy. We had Windows NT computers, Windows XP computers, and we had a 40-meg internet connection. That's the numbers I want you to see because those will keep going up and they'll talk about those later. Then we go into Byron Stewart era. At this time, we had a huge infusion of money from Obama whenever he took office. It actually paid for a lot of technology that was about to be thrown out. What we did add Wi-Fi to the district was an Aruba system. We also, because the Wi-Fi was available, we started giving iPads for some elementary teachers. Students went to Google. We had gaggle before that. We got more student labs, once again, Obama money. We started moving them to laptops, netbooks. We even tried to start, we experimented with Chromebooks right around the end of that. This was the same time we took over phone maintenance from Grendens and emergency radios were introduced. This time, Windows 7 was released. This had the same system requirements as XP. So those XP machines slapped Windows 7 on it, were good to go. We upped our internet to 100 megabits per second. So now we're to the pre-COVID time. We bought way more Chromebooks. So all those netbooks and laptops, we were like, no, this isn't gonna work. The Chromebooks do work. They're very cheap, a lot more easy to manage. We did, we added cameras to our plane instead of having Grendens do that. And then we did a first network overhaul, not fiber and copper, but with the switches, the electronic devices that connect everything. We replaced all those and the Wi-Fi. In this time, the CILY started. We also had iReady implemented. But the biggest thing was the online testing. When they implemented online testing, that's when tech went through the roof. Because now it wasn't just a luxury to have. We had to have this technology working for testing and it had to work really well. And so that kind of changed the game a little bit. Windows 10 was released. Once again, you could take your Windows 7 machine, slap Windows 10 on it and we're good to go. We upped our internet to 250. Just if you're keeping track, a home DSL connection is 10. So that's where we're at. Starlink gets you about 40 to 100, depending on like, you know, how many people are using it. So now post-COVID, if we thought Chromebooks before were a lot, now we have a ton of Chromebooks. And this came at a really good time because around this time, we were discussing getting rid of Chromebooks because there was no way we could afford to keep them. We had way more Chromebooks than we had the budget to keep with. And we had made plans before the virus was ever even discovered. We're like, okay, at these years, we're just gonna have to start phasing them out. Then COVID happened and all of those devices that were end of life were lost whenever they went home with the students. And so then the money that the Chromebooks that we finally got kind of replaced us. It was like the answer to a prayer. I mean, it just worked really well in our favor. We did have some EOL devices. EOL stands for end of life. That's where they no longer get updates and they no longer continue to work in a reliable manner. So the ones that we did have that were end of life that we didn't lose, we sold $20 a device to staff and students. E-rate came around. We upgraded the Wi-Fi once more. We updated the cameras and access control. Those were some of the grants that you guys have approved with the camera upgrades and access control. All that was in there. Tech took over keys for maintenance and then we promptly gave them back. And then Isaac started and the CTE expansion where we started using Mac devices. I was adamantly against Macs. Macs were never gonna be on the district and what do you know now, we'll put Macs everywhere. So, and that was because of the CTE expansion. We found out that the computers that we needed, they were actually cheaper to get a Mac because whatever, and they were cheaper to do it that way. So we did. So this is where things started to get hard. Windows 10 was EOL. It's marked for end of life. That's happening next summer. But you cannot just take 11 and slap it on those machines. They've upped the system requirements. So you have to buy a whole new machine, which puts the prices through the roof. There was a big discussion about this, about Windows 11 versus Mac versus Chrome. We did decide to pretty much move most people to Chrome. It's been fun. But if you're curious, the document's in there about how we decided to break that down. But ultimately, you know, the Chromebook does offer the necessary features that you would need to run a class. It's just not what a lot of people are used to and it's, I will say, it's not as polished, you know? And so that's the problem we're running into, but I, I think it's the only logical way we can continue forward. I mean, I've been in tech for a while. I've seen a lot of tech that we aren't able to maintain because there's just not enough money for it. And I feel like this is the best way to do that, you know? So that's, I still stand by that. And we're currently at 500 megabits per second. So where are we at now? The tech department looks a lot different now than it did whenever Jerry was here. So we still have servers, but they're a whole different slew of them. We have networking, there's Wi-Fi. We do our own fiber in-house now, unless it's major and then we can call in current or ShowMe. We do a lot more peripherals. We do events that the school has. We have three different, or four different operating systems actually. One of them is Linux, which is a server operating system that we take care of. So this is a very hard spot for us because we have to have two different print servers. We have to have two different VMA controls. We have to have two different things to maintain a multi-operating system network. We also deal with physical security. We have a hand in network security. We do data governance and a whole bunch of other things that we just have a hand in. Not that we manage these, but we do still have to help a little bit to keep the, keep everything going. So, E-rate. Now that I've given you all that, I want to tell you, I'm gonna get to the point where I'm gonna tell you what we're probably gonna look at E-rate for, but let me tell you what E-rate is. E-rate is some money that is given to us based on our free and reduced lunch numbers. It is a tax that you'll find on your internet or phone bills. It's a small number, but it adds up to a lot. Because we fall in the 50 to 74% range for free and reduced lunch, we get an 80% discount. So that means our internet bill, say $1,000, we only have to pay 200 on it. So it's a very, very good system. E-rate also helps out a lot. You remember those network upgrades with the switches and access points and stuff? Those could be upwards of $100,000 and we only had to pay 20. So E-rate helps out a lot. There's a bidding process that goes into it. You have to like, make sure you always get the lowest bid and there's some hoops you have to jump through, but it does pretty well. It's only for networking equipment though. It doesn't cover servers or Chromebooks or anything like that. It's just for communications. Recently, E-rate's been challenged in court. I don't know what's gonna happen to that. So if that goes away, that's gonna be very sad. But as of now, they told us just to continue on as normal. Things we have bought with E-rate, firewall switches, access points, cell phone plans and phone lines. We used to actually use E-rate to pay for the admin cell phones. Because it was an eligible thing back then. They've since removed that. And so that's not something that we can cover with E-rate. And they do still pay our internet bill, or a large portion of it. Okay, so here is where we're at. So this year, we did, we started the upgrade. We started with middle school and high school. We had a district budget of 58,000. That was for servers. That was just for our, our general operating stuff and also for our district employees. So we had to upgrade some of the district employees. We then had 28,000 for the high school budget and 27,000 for the middle school. That's just bought Chromebooks, monitors, docking stations. And we went through and replaced everybody. Here we are also setting aside $45,000 to go into a fund for because in 2029, yeah, May 2029, that, all those Chromebooks that we bought with COVID are gonna go end of life all at the same time. It is like the worst case scenario because we can't buy more Chromebooks now because then we're gonna have a surplus, you know? And then they're also gonna go end of life before we need them to, you know? So really, we need to maybe buy a couple of years prior. But we don't want to start buying now because that's just gonna give us even more that's gonna end and we're not gonna have any use for them or not good use for them. So we're setting aside money right now. That's gonna hopefully get us about 36,000. We've talked about this. We're still like, what do we do? But we're making plans on how we're gonna handle that. Then next summer, whenever the next year's budget comes around, we're gonna finish upgrading elementary. It'll probably be somewhere in the same boat. We have more teachers. So I'd expect it just to be a little bit higher. Because Chromebooks, it's a per-teacher type thing. But this summer, we're also looking, our firewall has ended. So we're gonna have to replace our firewall because or renew the subscription on it. So that'll be an E-rate item that we're gonna ask about. We're gonna look into a backup internet through Starlink. I'm not really sure how that works, but we're gonna see if that's an option. Because say ShowMe has an issue or some, the fiber gets cut or something, you know, if we had a second source of internet, we wouldn't have to lose our phones or we wouldn't have to lose access to infinite campus or, I mean, it's a pretty big deal when the internet goes down. So we're gonna look at that. And we're also gonna look at increasing internet bandwidth. The problem that we're already at, we're at 500, right? We can easily hit 500. So we've implemented the OSM. It's a program I wrote. It allows teachers to filter firewalls on their own terms. So we have the main firewall that filters, you know, the pornography, the hacking, the gambling, all the stuff that you don't want kids going to. But then we have another one that the teachers control that just is more of an on-task firewall. Just like, let's do what you're supposed to do. Let's not use all the bandwidth playing games. Because when you use all the bandwidth playing games and people taking tests can't do their stuff, you know? So we can easily saturate 100, a 500 meg pipe, no problem. Once we've dropped it down, like once we put the OSM in and the teachers are using it, it does bring us down. You generally want to have about 20% up top that you're not really touching. I mean, if you have to, you can, but then you want to ride in that next 20%. And I think we generally ride in there pretty well, you know? So I'm happy with the system. But it's pretty stressful for teachers, I'll tell you that. Like, I mean, the OSM has stressed a lot of people out, but the only other option would be to increase internet bandwidth to where that doesn't have to be as strict. So those are some things we're looking into. Last slide, a couple of other challenges we face, financial constraints, everybody, this is a very universal thing. We don't have enough help to keep up with the workload. There's just a lot more tech and we feel like we're drowning. I mean, I, once again, point one, I understand financial constraints and time constraints too, you know? I mean, there's only two of us and there's not enough time. But we want to try to do the best we can. We're trying. So I don't really know what else we can do there. We are still, like you said, doing the end of life upgrades, doing that. And we have access control on the, on the plan to finish. That's not something, we've gotta catch up here first before we can tackle another project. Other than that, is there any other questions?
You can plan all this out and five years down from road, it'll all be different.
Oh, it's, yes, very much so. And the hard thing is, if you look at this right here, this number is based on Chromebook prices right now. What's to say if a chip shortage goes in, like those prices could double, you know? It's happened before, you know? If Japan gets invaded, you know, where all the chips in the entire globe were made, you know, we're having, we have a lot of issues. So. But yeah, we're, we're planning it. We're trying to do the best we can with that. I just wanted to give you guys a, a heads up on what, what we're working on.
When you say end of life of Chromebooks, does that mean they all just quit all of a sudden?
No, it means that they don't get updates. So the biggest concern with updates is security. You don't want to have an insecure system. So if you, the people that program the computers do the best they can, but they're human, they make mistakes. So when a mistake is found, that a bad guy can then inject something onto your computer. So like, let's say there's an ad on the side. If there's a problem, the ad can go in there and make a virus on your computer. You didn't even have to click on anything. And so the updates keep it up to date, make your system secure. And so when they go end of life, you don't get those anymore and those are problems because there's a ton of vulnerabilities.
Why do you not get those anymore?
The updates? Because the updates have to be provided, like it's a cost for Google. So Google's actually providing 10 years of updates, which is like, that's unheard of. You know, for the cheap devices we have, Windows would provide 10 years, but they would provide a price that was twice the item, you know? So I still think, like I said, Chromebooks are a very good deal for the price.
Yeah, okay, I understand.
So you're saying you, you guys are swamped?
No, not at all.
So isn't that like when, when I would used to work up here and I'd call you and you'd be down in there five minutes to have my computer fixed? It doesn't work that way anymore?
Unfortunately, no.
If it was you, probably so.
Well, he just came down and plugged it in.
But anyway, we'll probably, E-rate starts in January. We'll start doing our stuff over Christmas break. We'll start looking into that stuff and hopefully come back February and tell you, hey, this is what we want to do. You guys approve it and then we'll just continue on. So.
Is there no way, we're talking about this 500,000 all at once, there's no way when we get to that point to try to stair-step this?
Oh, we could, yeah. I mean, we, I wouldn't stair-step it too much though, because like, if you start stair-steping it now, that means that they're gonna, the 10-year mark starts now. And so you're gonna start losing them at that point. And we're gonna have a ton of Chromebooks. And if you get accustomed to having that many Chromebooks, then it's harder to like narrow it back down. We've seen this like three times now, where like, they're about to die and infusion of money. They're about to die and infusion of money. So. But yeah, I mean, we can totally do that. I think it'd be wise to, to stagger at least a couple of years out, but I wouldn't go too many farther back.
Thanks for all you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Way past me.
Did you want to?
We all have to take your word. We have to take your word.
That's what I thought. I'm assuming they gave me this chance here. That's what I thought, I'm assuming they gave me this chance here.
That's probably about to die.
25.
I think he says he can spot ours.
Well, he's got my computer. I have his.
There'll be a quiz on everything Andrew went over. We're beating tonight.
The only thing we heard was on the first round.
We went from 40 to 500. There's your number.
I like your gas light.
And the 500,000?
Yeah, you remember that one.
It's not the rest.
Okay, Mr. Gumm?
Yeah, we, you'll need to...
Yeah, we went to MSBA, Mr. Gumm and I, in Kansas City. And I will talk about Senate Bill 727 in my financial update. So, that's just so much positive there that I'll just, I'll leave that for its own show. But I do want to mention real quick, I went to another staff recruitment retention. I lost breakout session is what I'm looking for there. But anyway, boosting our bears kind of came out of that. But that's an opportunity for our community to nominate some worthy staff and teachers of some extra recognition. So, you'll be seeing more of boosting our bears in the coming weeks. But just another way we can try to honor our staff a little bit and give them some recognition. Like our nurses and our tech guys and everybody else that does a lot for our district, so. What do you want to add?
I went to the president's workshop and it was built around board president and superintendent relations and president members' relations and teamwork, working together. We already have all that down, so I've slept through most of it. No, it was good, it was good. And it, I did feel good after hearing some of the other stories that people were dealing with. But, and then I went to a workshop on, or session on Senate Bill 727. You'll hear all the good news from that. Then I went to one on, the MSBA is coming out with a new superintendent evaluation. And it's been piloted by a few schools. And they're trying to simplify things and make it more manageable and make it more understandable for everybody involved. And we'll, we'll see it in about a year. I would say before next year, we will see what it looks like and decide if we want to use it. But this year, we're going to go ahead and use the one we've, we've got. And then I went to one put on by the Missouri Public Education Foundation. It's a nonprofit, nonprofit voice for public education. It started a couple of years ago as things were starting to, negative things were starting to show up for public education. Vouchers being one, and then the number of charter schools that are showing up. And financing becoming more of a problem for everyone. And, but it's basically some retired educators and MSBA people that have, that have put, that have put this organization together. Just, their main goal is to educate the public on the needs of public education, the value of public education and what obstacles we face. Went to one put on by Park Hill, and I meant to bring something for you, but I'll bring it by Mr. Schmidt for you. But it was, the title was preparing future-ready students. And it's similar to our bare necessities and looking at providing all students a pathway to succeed after they leave, leave high school, preparing them for, you know, with that goal in mind. They've got a real, Park Hill's a big school district and they've got, they've got a real fancy, shiny publication that they put out. But, but there is some good stuff in it, too. Showing their different pathways that they have for these students. And we're doing some of those things, so it was good. And then, and the last one I went to was a, it's a project through MSBA called Community Alliances for Student Success. And it's basically, they're, they're trying to build a program to bring together a lot of different partners in the community to address struggles that students have from learning loss, attendance, and then in the school, teacher recruitment and teacher retention. So, basically, just trying to connect all the community partners together and community resources together to, to address those, those issues. It was a good conference, you know, the, some of the best, as I know Matt and Debbie went. The best things are what you learn from sitting down with fellow board members from other schools and hearing the issues that they face. And, and it was good to hear the people from MSBA wanting to hear issues that are facing us out here. So, so it was good.
Yeah, some good stuff. One other session I forgot to mention, I went to a sponsorship or advertising in the school district session put on by NIXA Public Schools. NIXA makes $350,000 a year off advertising. NIXA, yeah, so important to keep that in the front of your mind. But there may be some untapped opportunities there for us, probably not to the tune of 350,000. But Coach Colley's warming up to sponsorships. But anyway, there, I took copious notes on that one and we'll see where that goes. But it was a, it was a good conference. Again, Senate Bill 727 was kind of the dominant issue. I spent four hours in a, in a session on that that I'll, I'll talk to you about here in just a second. I did want to mention, too, this is not MSBA-related, but I appreciate everybody coming to our, our school campus tours the other day. I know we still need to get Debbie in. But that was, I think, really appreciated by our staff and our kids. And hopefully you guys got some good tips. And our tour guides were outstanding, from the elementary to the middle school to high school to CTEs. So, saw a lot of great things. I know the comments, some of the comments I heard that were repeated were, you know, to the tune of, there's a lot of activity that goes on in the classroom. It looks differently than it looked. Maybe when you were in school, I'm not going to put a year on it. But a lot of very active learning going on in our, in our district and lots of good things. But hopefully you guys were able to take a peek at during your tours. So, I appreciate your willingness to do that.
Thanks for having us. We need to do that.
Yep, we'll try to do it again sometime. All right, district financial update. This is going to be kind of a two-parter. The first parter is just kind of a, there was an ask for some final ESER stats. So, there's the, there's the final statistics for you from our ESER funds. That is complete and over with. So, that's a breakdown of how we spent that ESER money, over $3 million that we had in ESER. $621,000 went to instruction. $376,000 went to support services. Lots of technology in the instruction piece. And then support services kind of ran the gambit there. And then facilities and construction, obviously the big portion of that. About $700,000 was the, was the athletic training facility. The other portion of that was put into Fund IV. And then that, with the intent to pay off the HVAC system, which we've moved over since then. And we'll continue to make payments on that from that money that we received from the ESER funds. Any questions on that before I get into 727? Okay, let me pull up another slideshow. So, school finance, I'm sorry to say, there's not a lot of positives coming out of that. And I know I've been kind of a Debbie Downer lately and it's real, I'm sorry. That's insulting, isn't it, Debbie? I'm sorry. Man, I'm going to have to change that. I apologize, I apologize. I'll stand up and give you this great news. And again, we're, we've become very good at Willow Springs. My predecessors have done a very good job of, of being conservative and being creative with our budget. We're going to continue to do that to make sure that we have the best staff for our kids that we can. So, you're going to hear a lot of stuff here that's pretty negative and gloom and doom. But we are committed to continue to be creative and make sure that, that our staff and our kids ultimately are taken care of. So, I want that proviso out there before we get into the nuts and bolts of this. So, 727 was passed last spring. So, some of this is in effect now. Some of it will be in effect in the coming year and beyond. And this is not, we, along with 500 other districts in the state, are all kind of battling this in different ways. Charter school funding. So, what charter schools have to do with Willow Springs, right? That doesn't really affect us, but it does. So, the foundation formula, where we've already talked about, we receive the majority of our money from the state foundation formula. Charter schools receive state funding now through the foundation formula, just like a traditional LEA, which, which we are. So, if they're getting a piece of that pie, that potentially could be less for us. So, if that results in a state withholding, that will result in lesser cash flow for all the other public schools in the state. And it creates a need for higher reserves because you can't bank on the state providing as much money. And that's a common theme throughout this, so we're just starting here. But the state only has so much money and once that's gone, they don't have it. And then we're not going to get it in a number of different areas. Elementary literacy fund, this is a good thing. And a lot of these are well-intentioned, as are a lot of things from Jeff City. Maybe well-intentioned, but maybe not thought out like, like they could be. Elementary literacy fund, this is the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. This is a great thing. It gets books in the hands of kids. It's state-funded. So, the state of Missouri pays for that program and gets those books into the hands of our kids. So, that's great. But this is one that will continue to come up, subject to legislative annual appropriation. So, that is written into multiple 727 items. And that means if it's there, great. If it's not, we're not funding it. So, the Imagination Library is just one of many things that has that earmark on it. The Most Scholars K-12 Scholarship Program. I don't know if you remembered it back when this 727 was a big issue, but I talked about, this was one of the dangers of that bill. So, it's a tax credit voucher expansion. So, we have this right now, but it's going to increase with 727. It increased the total annual dollar amount the state can spend on vouchers. And vouchers are, I don't want my kid to go to this school, I'm going to homeschool them. And because of that, I'm going to get X amount of money from the state to pay for my child's education. Or in charter districts, I'm going to move my kid to the charter school and the state's going to help me fund that. So, there was a cap of $50 million on that, that's going up to $75 million. And this is the important part, they tied it to increase, they tied the increases to public school state aid increases. And where you're going to see that is transportation is where they're going to take that first. So, where they were 100% funding transportation, we can expect that to drop in the next few years. And that will increase annually by any percentage increase or decrease in the amount appropriated under the formula. So, if the formula goes up, this number is going to go up. Remove the provision, the guarantee, transportation would be funded as a condition of new vouchers. That's eliminated geographic restrictions for students and made it easier for students to be eligible. So, to be eligible for this, it used to be a lower cap, but now it's 300% of free and reduced lunch. So, for a family of four, that'd be $165,000. So, as long as you're below that, which would be, you know, 99% of people in Hough County, probably, you're eligible for that. So, the eligibility increased tremendously. So, they're not going to have any problem getting rid of $75 million is the, is the gist of that. There were some school calendar provisos in there. And this very legislative angling there was to try to eliminate the four-day school week is what they're, they're trying to do with this. This will take effect July 1, 2026, so it's still a little bit of time off. Most districts go on the 1044 hours, which is what we go off of. There is no day requirement for school districts. You have to have that minimum amount of hours. Right now, we're at 1089 and 161 days. And that's pretty consistently what we've been at for the last several years. Charter districts, so if you're a county that permits charter districts, which there aren't, I mean, St. Louis, Kansas City and Columbia County, it's a Boone County, right now, those are the districts that are charter districts. And then cities with 30,000-plus population, they now have to have 1044 and 169 days or they can approve a four-day school week by the voters. So, they have to go to the voters to get that four-day school week permit.
Have I said how often or just once or how does it work?
That was a topic of discussion is how often. And that's still, they're not sure on that as far as I know. Obviously, that doesn't apply to us, but those things matter. And the financial incentive, again, it's, it's legislators trying to kill the four-day school day or the four-day school week. Any district with 169 days of school or more will receive 1%. For us, that would be about $70,000 of your state aid in '26 and '27. So, an increase in the amount of money you're getting from the state by 1% and then that's going to go up. I think it's capped at 3%. Funds must be used to increase teacher salaries. And all of this, again, subject to annual appropriation. This, you know, we'll talk about this as an admin team and with our teachers. I don't really foresee that being, you know, we would have to increase our calendar by eight days and cost of operations for the district. I'm not sure that we would really gain a lot. That $70,000 would probably be a wash if you're looking at going to school eight more days plus. So, I'm not sure that that really plays into what, what we need to do, but it's just kind of showing you where things are headed. There is still half of the SCA right now, there are four-day weeks and half that are not. And that's always a, always a conversation in education circles. Career ladder, they changed that. They waived the requirement of two years in a Missouri public school. So, somebody from Arkansas could come in and immediately get career ladders. So, that's, that's good. Changed the requirement that hours must occur outside of compensated hours. However, it's still subject to a district plan approved by the board. So, the state says you don't have to accumulate your career ladders outside of your contracted time. But as a district, we can still put that in our district plan, if that makes sense. And career ladder, subject to annual appropriation, which that would be a pretty significant blow if they ever took career ladder away. So, we talked about weighted ADA already a little bit tonight. There's some changes there, changes for the good, for our, our budget potentially. Changes the calculation for weighted ADA to de-emphasize daily attendance beginning in '25 and '26. And I went over all of this with our superintendent's council, too. So, teachers are aware of most of this stuff. By 2029, 30, weighted ADA will be split 50-50 between ADA and membership. That's kind of a new term that they're throwing out. So, ADA has always been the way we've, we've tracked this. And they're going to, I think it's increased by 10% in '25, '26, and it'll keep working until it's 50-50. And the membership enrolled, students that are enrolled on the last Wednesday of September and January who were in attendance one day or more during the preceding 10 days of school. That's a lot of stuff there. Basically, you're going to get credit for kids that are enrolled and not just average daily attendance. It's a good thing, okay? So, it's going to mean we're going to accumulate more ADA on membership than we will on just straight ADA. So, that's a good thing for the district. But again, it's all dependent on appropriations. Minimum teacher salary. So, we've had the, the grant, the teacher salary grant for the last few years. They've taken that grant and they've made it a state statute. So, starting in '25, '26, by law, we have to pay teachers a minimum of $40,000. That's great. Masters plus 10 years of experience, we'll have to pay $46,000 minimum and then that goes up to $48,000. goes up to $48,000 by '27, '28. Beginning in '28, '29, that, both of these numbers, 40 and 48, will be increased by inflation of at least 1% and capped at 3%. So if inflation rises, this number will rise as well. So this is all fantastic, but you can see where it presents a problem for our salary schedule and kind of how things are evened out, as far as your beginning teachers and your veteran teachers. It also creates the teacher baseline salary grant, so that grant we've been using for the last few years, it's still there to help districts, but it's subject to legislative appropriation. So as soon as the state does not have the money to fund it, they don't have to, but this is a statute that we have to pay it. So career ladder, for instance, I'm not saying career ladder is going away, but if they couldn't fund it, that's something we could look at, that we just can't do that anymore. We don't have that option with a teacher's salary. Couple of notes from that. There's also wording shall not result in the demotion of a teacher on the salary schedule. So there's no way you can drop teachers down from where they're at currently on the salary schedule based on that. And the questions are, what will be the cost to the district? Does there need to be a new salary schedule? Those are some big questions that will have to be looked at in the next few years, because as you'll see in the next slides, this is something that's going to have to, it's going to need attention. So what if a district cannot afford it? And, you know, we're in a smaller district, and we have to be conservative with our budget, but there are districts out there that are smaller, and it's going to be even more of a challenge for them. 316 school districts are dependent on state funding to reach the current $38,000 minimum. So right now, just to get teachers to 38, well over half the state schools have to have help to get to that point. DESI estimates that 414 districts and over 7,000 teachers will be impacted by the new legislation costing over $33 million a year. And if the board determines that your district is not in compliance, that's the state board, by law, the district will receive the state, the amount of state aid it received in '93, '94. Yeah, why '93, '94? I have no clue. I mean, I guess from 20 years, 30 years. Yeah, basically. So we, obviously, we're going to be in compliance, but just in case you were thinking, oh, we'll just not be in compliance, that's not what we want to do. I don't know what we were getting in '93, '94, but we don't want to go back to that. So the future of Missouri education finance is something that I'll be looking at a lot in the next several months. And this comes back also, state income tax cuts approved in '22. You guys remember when that happened, right? I mean, that's a really great thing. Nobody wants to pay a bunch of income tax. And that will continue to phase in through '27, and it will result in a 20% overall cut in eight years. What that does, that's a total cost of $1.8 billion less in revenue in the state budget. So that stops $1.8 billion of coming into the state budget that they can then push down and appropriate to schools and lots of other entities. Before the income tax, Missouri was ranked 11th for the lowest tax burden in the nation. So we're obviously probably top 10 now after that tax cut. ESAR is gone. SAT increase for next year. So that's a good thing for us, but that's going to cost the state $320 million. And then the cost to implement, so all that stuff that we just went over, the cost of the state to cover all of that is estimated at $468 million per year. DESI says, we can't assume this is all going to be funded. And this is like the current quote, this is not even two or three years down the line. There's going to be some really hard decisions and prioritization that has to happen throughout the process. So what happens if the state can't fund it all? Withholdings. Formula, transportation, teacher salary grant, flattening of the SAT, but this, it doesn't really matter what they withhold or underfund. We're still responsible for paying our teachers and paying for operations and all those things. So we need to plan with what's the best way to manage our finances without being as heavily reliant on the state. And obviously, we're always going to have to be reliant on some of that state aid. But, you know, a tax levy would be fantastic. That would help out with a lot of this. But in the meantime, we're just going to have to be very conservative. I think that's it on that one note.
Two comments. I think, first of all, doom and gloom, we've got all this gambling money that we're going to get now since.
Oh, that's right, that's right. How could I not put that in there?
And the second thing, with all these slides, and every one of them has the red there, right? Okay, well, what happens if, do they have that list of priorities on what if we have money for some of it, but we don't have money for all of it? Which one are we funding and which one are we not funding?
It's a great question. Yeah, they don't. They don't. They'll be up to legislative, you know, whatever they decide. And DESI, you know, DESI, they request so much in appropriations, and then the legislator decides how much they can give them, and then DESI will divvy out what they've got.
Donny Downer.
But, you know, if you're trying to find some silver lining, we're not alone. Like, I sat in a room full of people, and we had people from probably Park Hill down to, you know, like Couch or Koschka. Like, it's, everybody is struggling with this, and some may be struggling, obviously, more than others. But when you've got 500-plus school districts and everybody is looking at this, you know, I would hope that something would be able to happen or change to help out our public schools. But we have to plan with, that help is not going to come, but hopefully it will.
One other thing we haven't talked about, but I just got it in the mail yesterday, the tax assessment. And with the encouragement to apply as a senior for a tax credit for next year. And so there's going to be a lot of seniors that will do that.
Maybe even.
And I wonder how much that's going to impact our.
There will be some impact.
From the county, yeah, local revenue. It's bound to be significant.
So, and you talked about a tax levy. So if you get your tax, the real estate, it's real estate and personal property, right? If that gets frozen, and then you pass a levy, or tax increase, you know, a levy increase, then you got your people that won't be paying any.
Any increase.
But that's a year-by-year thing, I don't have it, right? You have the.
You have to plan every year, yeah.
Hopefully, some seniors will forget.
So, yes, Will, it is, it's pretty bleak, but we're going to keep working the problem and finding solutions, and we'll keep reaching out to other districts. And there's a lot of good people in the same situation, and we'll figure out how to navigate it.
And I think DESI is going to have a shortfall this year.
Yeah.
And whether or not the state is going to step up and fill in, I don't know. The one thing that we do need to do is make sure we reach out to our local legislators and express how important this is to local schools.
We've got some news.
Yeah, we do. And getting away, you know, ideally, you get away from the state government, you know, controlling so much of our budget, but the only way to do that is to let the local people do it. That requires a tax, and that's always an uphill battle. But, there you go. That's all I've got on budget tonight.
Any other questions or discussion on this? Soak it all in?
Yeah.
Because we'll be talking about it again.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, that's not the last time you'll hear about 727.
That currently covered its full.
Yeah.
The oculus.
All right.
Policy.
Policy revisions. I appreciate the policy committee meeting last week and went over a lot of these policy revisions. Most of this is, you know, legal and new laws, just changes that we need to make to reflect new legislation. I don't think there's anything controversial or nothing that really sparked a ton of conversation, but you guys are welcome to jump in on any of those policies if you want to highlight any of those for the rest of the team. But there's a bunch of them, and, yeah, I'll be happy to chat about any of those that
We're just talking a little bit. Coach, you want to?
Well, I think, man, we are, I'm looking at this closed meeting.
Yeah.
Thing. Are we, I guess we are doing that. We're talking about when you actually make the motion to go into executive session, that you have to say the reason of the motion that you're going into executive session.
I think we do that, but not maybe.
No, probably not.
Yeah, I mean, it's written, but not verbal.
Is it specified or?
Well, it says in the motion.
Yeah, in the minutes, it's written.
Well, I think they're actually called a special specific motion. I guess, I guess that's really not a change.
So it would just be, is how you're reading it, it would be, you know, Mike would receive a motion to go into executive session for?
Per person.
Say.
Yeah.
And then, well, of course, we're going to roll call on that. It says that.
Did the committee find anything?
Oh, pretty good, right? All right, good. We move on. Gina has sat through all of this. She's still here. Super hi, did you have a great dinner tonight?
Great dinner. Enjoyed it?
Very good.
Good. I'm just here to talk about PLE. That is Pay Lunch Quality Tool. Every year, Jamie and I use this tool to see what the state recommends on our lunch for the kiddos, to see if we need to move it up, move it around. We do not have to raise them based on this tool, but it is recommended that we do. If we do not raise them, we have, if we don't raise them, and we can just continue going on with the same price that we are going on, then we have to pay the deficit, if we go into a deficit with that, out of our local school funds. This last summer, the board voted to go ahead and raise those prices from $2.40 to $2.50, and we just want to raise those prices in January, and we need you guys' approval for that.
So it says it raised 10 cents to the school lunches in the summertime. So that's not referencing summer school, it's referencing just school price, if you want to do it in the summer.
You've already approved it in the summer.
You guys voted on it this summer to go from $2.40 to $2.50. We did not implement that yet. We were going to implement it in January.
Okay. So are you asking to go to $2.60, or are you just asking?
$2.50, just to implement it.
This is just an FYI, that the expectation in the summer was that it would happen in August. It did not happen in August, but it will be happening in January. So, no, you don't have to do anything.
Okay.
It's already been approved.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just more of a FYI that that's going to be happening in January.
And that's really all I had on there. I was kind of.
Tell us about pumpkin pies for Thanksgiving lunches, right?
Well, they're delicious, and I believe all of our principals are going to hand out pumpkin pies for it.
Hey, remember where the real estate office is? They're handing those. Just up there.
Just come on down, you guys can help hand them out.
Hey, there we go.
All night long, we've been talking about lunch financing, or whatever. Are we, where are we at with reduced and all that? We got those people in?
Maybe I can answer this one correctly tonight.
No, you're good.
So then we really didn't, it didn't really improve that much with all the incentive that we gave for everyone. We're still sitting at around 365 total applications. So that's not, it's not a whole terrible amount. We had, I believe, 174, don't quote me on that number, but I believe it was 174 that were actually applications, not kids, that were approved for free and reduced lunches this last year, this October.
And that's through the USDA?
DESI, yes.
But this CEP, whatever that is, what's the difference from that and what you just said?
CEP is community eligibility, eligibility, eligibility provision. I can't talk that.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay, so that is based on your SNAP numbers and your free and reduced lunch numbers. Right now, we're not setting really good in those numbers to say that we could go over to CEP. We have other areas, schools that are doing it or started it and then have pulled back because it's based on elementary, middle school, and high school. So you can't put them all in there in one ball. So if we were to get approved, our elementary could be approved because their numbers look good, but your middle school and high school numbers are not where they need to be to be approved. Does that make any sense to anyone?
But if that was, that's all free meals, right?
Yep.
If that, I'm done here. So if we did qualify for all that, wouldn't that make our funding to the state better? I mean, since we're getting, a lot of this is based off free and loose, free and reduced.
You're locked in for four years based on the information that we send them if we sign up for CEP. I can't say it would be better. I think we'd have to watch it a little bit closer, our budget a little bit closer if we went CEP. But that's my personal opinion.
So right now, we're reimbursed through the state for meals. Going to CEP, it gives free meals for everybody, but the free and reduced lunch count goes well beyond just free and reduced lunch. We need those numbers as high as we can because of weighted ADA and all of these other budgetary issues. I mean, it is, that's part of it, is lunch, but the higher those numbers, the more assistance we get from.
100%. Yes.
So out of 11, are you saying out of 1,100 kids or roughly in that ballpark, 300 and something have even filled the paperwork out?
Yes, have filled the paperwork out.
That's not the ones that qualify, that's just the people that's filled the paperwork.
Yes.
So is there.
I believe 174.
A mandatory thing for the start of the school year?
Yeah, it's online. We have it at every open house. We have it at parent-teacher conferences. We've got a TV that we're trying to give away. I mean, we've tried all kinds of different ways to incentivize just filling it out.
It can't be a mandatory.
We can't make people fill it out. Because it requires you to put in your income.
Do we send home the paper application?
Yeah, at the beginning of school.
Anyway, no, that's made a loss of.
I also mail them to some people that I know that just don't come into town very frequently. I have a list that we keep that we just, we know that Johnny's not going to come in, they're not going to come in, they're not going to come and fill it out. So I just put it in an envelope, send it to them. Sometimes they send it back, sometimes they don't.
Can we send it to them digitally?
We actually are talking about that. It's online right now.
Yeah, it's online, but we can send a link for sure.
What do you think the money difference is? I mean, estimated money loss or potential, however you want to look at it.
CEP?
Or no, this.
Free and reduced.
Free and reduced.
Oh, gosh.
If everybody filled it out.
If we had, if we could get everybody in the area that actually needed to fill that out, we would, it would be fantastic.
So are these people, are they just paying full price for lunch when they can have it reduced? Is that what is going on?
They are choosing not to fill the paperwork out. Therefore, they are put at paid, and sometimes they pay, sometimes they don't.
How are our unpaid lunch bills?
It's large right now. I think we're sitting at right around $24,000 in lunch debt. Usually in December, it drops a little bit. People start getting turned over to collections in November, December time, and we start trying to get that money. And usually before I turn them over to collections this month, I'll start calling them, they'll get their third letter. And when they get their third letter, I follow that up with a phone call saying, hey, I don't want to turn you over to collections. If you can please pay something on this bill, I'll work with you. And sometimes, you know, if we get a donation in and they're working with us, I can put that money over there towards their bill a little bit, as long as they're working with us.
Again, if they just fill out the paperwork, that problem wouldn't be there from the beginning.
They fill it out, and they qualify. They would not have that problem.
Would that take care of retroactively the bill they owe us?
We've worked some things out with people, depending on how much they've allowed their bill to get, that if you fill this paperwork out, we get you on free for the rest of the year, then we will do something with this right here.
Is there a community element in some place like Munch that gives away, or a church pantry or something like that? Could we reach out to them?
Yeah, we could, we could have those applications there and provide those people that information.
That would be awesome.
Because that's-
It's not like the thing in the world to do.
That's one of the qualifiers for receiving is if you receive free and reduced lunches, then you're eligible to receive assistance there.
And it's confidentiality too. I mean, it's, that community element can help us through this.
I don't think it's a bad thing. Again, like, you know, the confidentiality part of it. But if they're comfortable with sitting down and filling it out with Jeff at church or, you know, one of you guys.
Or even think to be directed to fill that out.
Yeah.
Get with Regina, she can, you know-
Yeah, it's even easier to fill out online. And I've helped a lot of people fill them out online. Once they figure out how to do it, it's a snap. It's easier than loading your Amazon cart. And most everyone knows how to do that.
I think I do. The appropriations.
Do you guys have any other questions?
Thank you for doing that. I heard those cards, the posters that the kids wear, the deals that it's working really well through the lunch line. Just give them more opportunity or, what do you, third best?
Yeah, we've drastically reduced the amount of time it takes to get the kids through the lunch line. Not everybody has a card yet. Like, we're still working on that. The majority of them do. And it's, I'm going to say on average, it's reduced to-
They're getting eight to 10?
I was going to say eight or nine minutes quicker through the line.
It's so much quicker. High school, when they have them and they don't have them shoved in their wallets, it's very handy. Middle school is a find. Like, right now, you look at them, you watch those kids come through. Once they, they're waiting on my staff to get food on the trays at this point, and that has never been a problem. Like, it's awesome.
So everybody has the same card, the same type card?
Yep, they have a picture.
Free or reduced or paid.
Oh, yes, everyone. They look exactly the same. No one knows the difference.
And, yeah, that's-
There would never be an identifying factor.
No, yeah. I wonder if parents know that.
That there's a difference on the cards, that there wouldn't be a difference?
Yeah.
That they're, you know, that if they fill that paper out.
That makes it even more confident.
So I have stressed that, that no one knows, when I've spoken to parents on the phone, no one has an absolute clue if your kid's on free. I mean, classroom teachers don't know that they're on free and reduced. Nobody knows that they're on free and reduced other than us that are sitting there, you know, doing the paperwork on that stuff.
You know, it could be one of those deals, you know, we did that community forum with the security deal, which more people have been there. But maybe this is something that we could do another forum on, come out.
Or some type of outreach.
We'll work on getting the word out better.
Can we, you're wanting to put some of those down at Munch? Just to say, hey, you want to fill this out while you're here?
Black applications?
Yeah, I've got plenty of them.
Just if we had a few there, because we do the same thing with SNAP and other things.
Sure. I don't see any problem with it if, you know, I can put little arrows on it, you know, the spots that need to be filled out. So they can do that. And again, we can also direct them online. And that has to go with Parent Portal, and everybody wants everyone on Parent Portal.
Colton volunteered to do some bear media for it, so we're-
Thank you, Colton.
Still giving on his way out.
I appreciate that.
That's what I'm about.
Thank you. Sorry for misunderstanding in the beginning.
Boy, you just warmed us up.
See, it just took me a minute. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Thanks for lunch tomorrow.
Where do we get the brisket?
This is the brisket tonight. I'm not sure what's for tomorrow.
Grilled cheese and tomato soup.
Yeah. It's my favorite day.
It's our favorite.
Yeah, we like that day.
Since Christmas is-
Thanks, Regina.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. For dinner.
Yes.
Stay tuned.
I'll have some brisket.
Our Christmas dinner.
Okay. You have a couple of bids in your folder on your iPad. After I've just gotten through telling you how money is so tight and things are so bad, I need you to buy a freezer for me. Regina needs you to buy a freezer for us.
Remember how good the food was?
Yeah. So this is the elementary high school freezer. It's located on the loading dock back behind the elementary cafeteria. Basically, there's a couple of big problems with it. The picture on your left, you can see the gap in the doorway. And if you've got a refrigerator at home, you don't want gaps in your refrigerator, right? Or your freezer. And that's what we've got going on there. That's a, this unit is 25 years old. Back in the 90s, we got this. So it's lit long, but it's ready to, ready to call it quits. The fan, so then Regina can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have to have the ladies go out and break ice on that fan every day.
More than once a day.
More than once a day to get that thing going because it's freezing up and-
This is a freezer, not like a walk-in, like a refrigerator?
It's a walk-in freezer.
It's a walk-in freezer, yeah.
Will you be able to get anything out of that one? Money-wise?
Scrap.
Yeah.
Scrap it?
I would scrap it. We pull a lot of work in it.
We'll try. We'll put it out there. But you have the bids. It's 13,961 for the box unit. And then the other bid, that's 6986, is for all of the stuff that goes into the unit. So it's going to be a little over $20,000 for that freezer replacement. And we've been pretty good so far this fall about not having to replace a lot of stuff. A lot of our operational costs have not been too bad. But this is one that, you know, sometimes things break and we got to fix them. Okay, Matt and Jeff, which one wanted to ask the question?
Is this the best bid and the only bid?
This is the only bid we have, yes. So it's the best one.
It's the best.
Window stripping down the bottom. Matt, right. Window stripping. That's right.
So any questions about the freezer? Okay.
I'll just look at Jeff.
I've learned a lot about freezers in this job that I never knew. Bear necessities. We've talked about this quite a bit. This is a community effort. These are the things we want from our high school graduates. The one on your screen is the short version. This is the one that you'll see most often. The bear necessities of being a resilient achiever, creative and critical thinker, collaborative communicator, engaged, responsible citizen, self-aware, and self-directed learner. Begin with the end in mind. This is the end. This is what we want from a graduate of Willow Springs. So when Colton walks across the stage, hopefully, he's done things at Willow Springs High School that help him become all of those qualities. He was probably born with those qualities, but for everybody else, we got to, we got to get them there. So I would ask the board tonight to adopt the bear necessities. You don't have to approve it, but just a vote of confidence that, yes, this is what, we agree that our graduates should have these qualities when they graduate from Willow Springs High School.
I think we'll be approving the adoption of these.
Approving the adoption, yes.
The bear necessities.
They won't go into policy or anything like that. It's just more of a show of support from the board that we agree that these are our qualities that we value. Last thing I've got, board filing dates. It's that time of year again.
More elections.
More elections, right? We just got past one, so let's talk about another one. Two seats are open for the April 8, 2025 election. But to be on that ballot, filing will begin at 8:00 a.m. on December 10, and will close at 5:00 p.m. on December 31, New Year's Eve at the central office, where Mandy will be waiting for-
Four to five.
To four and five. Yeah, we are going to just have that one-hour window on New Year's Eve. But that will be your dates, and the board needs to approve that those are the correct dates for the board filing.
All right.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it?
Just like that.
Yep, just like that.
We buy it.
Yep.
Blank, didn't we?
Yeah.
Well, we're ready to move on to items for action now. And to begin with, we have those policy revisions. Coach Colley, would you?
So moved.
You have them in front of you, so I would receive in order to approve the MSBA policy revisions as presented.
So moved.
She can have it, okay.
Do you get that?
I spent time.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I would receive a motion to approve the bear necessities as we, as have been presented. Approve the adoption of the bear necessities.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded.
Jeff, that's a good idea.
Any discussion?
I think I'll have it my fashion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Did you need us to do anything on the cooler, on the freezer?
Yeah, it's kind of, I'm sorry. I've got it up there. I don't have it in here.
Okay. It was over here. That's last, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so then a motion would be in order to approve the board filing dates as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded.
Just chuck it on, is that it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And finally, a motion would be in order to approve the purchase of a new walk-in freezer for the elementary and high school kitchen.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm so good.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Now, I would receive a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of student discipline and personnel issues.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded.
Aye.
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 Aye.